Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is five o'clock on Monday, November the fourth. Welcome to the regular school board meeting of Monticello District 882. If you're able to, please join us and rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first action item this evening is to make our tentative agenda our permanent agenda for the evening. And I will entertain a motion or any discussion to changes to the agenda. Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of making our tentative agenda our permanent agenda for the evening, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the motion passes six-zero. This evening, we do have one citizen's comment. We have one of our Monticello High School students, Whitney Sala, who's going to join us, and she has some prepared remarks. We are going to break from our usual procedure just slightly. She's asked for five minutes and thirty seconds instead of the typical three minutes, and so we have accommodated her with that request. So welcome, Whitney, and you have the floor.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chairman, Board of Directors, and Monticello community. My name is Whitney Sala, and I'm a 10th grade Deaf of Hard of Hearing student here at the high school. I am here tonight to share an experiment, experience that I recently had with the high school and district administration. Last February, at my reevaluation slash IP meeting, my Deaf of Hard of Hearing teacher presented to the team that I, along with some of my peers, take a sign language class through Northern Star Online. She stated that she was currently doing this class with student, a student and several of their peers from a different district, and it was very successful. Everyone at the meeting felt it was a great idea and would be realistic to achieve. My DHH teacher immediately started working with the school counselors to make this class happen for us. Six months after the meeting, when the schedules came out on August 26th, we found out that the high school was not willing to make this class work for myself and three other students. We were told by the high school administration that scheduling was complicated, and I had been scheduled for the course, but my peers had not been. There was immense breakdown of follow-through and communications between the counselors, the high school administration, and this district's special education administration. I decided to move forward with this course, but I am now taking a sign language class by myself. My parents were fierce advocates for me, but unfortunately, the administration was not willing to make it work. I've given each of you a timeline of events that took place between my parents slash the school dis, school and district staff. I had been excited for this opportunity for several reasons. My hearing has been declining, and there's a high chance that someday I may completely lose my hearing. So through, so learning sign language would be beneficial to me. Yes, I'm still given the opportunity to learn sign language, but having other students in class with me, but without having other students in class with me, I do not have the opportunity to practice what I'm learning. I also, it also doesn't do me much good if none of my friends are able to sign. This class not only teaches sign language, but also teaches about the deaf community. I unfortunately had some, have had some friends say some unkind things to me, and I feel it is because they don't realize the daily struggles I go through. I'm a lip reader, so I need to be looking at your face, and I had a peer tell me that they do not like that I stare so intently at them when they are talking to me. I had another peer tell me that it bothers people that I talk loudly. Due to my hearing loss, I have a hard time hearing my own voice. These are just two examples of encounters that I've come across, but there's been many more. I've felt this class would be a perfect opportunity for some of my friends to be more educated on what it's like to be a student with a hearing loss. My hope was that these friends could help be advocates and educate more students slash peers about the daily struggles that a student with a hearing loss experiences. If you go to the Monticello High School website under the principals page, you will find this quote. "As a dedicated educational institution, we place immense values on every, each and every student who enter our doors. Our overarching goal is to cultivate a safe and nourishing learning environment, one where students not only succeed academically, but also forge meaningful connections, explore opportunities to allow them excel both in and out of the classroom, and ultimately prepare them for their future endeavors." By denying me the opportunity to take this class with some of my peers, the administration was not standing by their core beliefs. I recognize that scheduling is hard, but so is dealing with a hearing loss, and I do not get to take the easy road. By making this class not, or by not making this class work for four students, the school took the easy road. They did not place immense values on each and every student creating a safe and nourishing learning environment, forge meaningful connections, or explore opportunities to help me excel. The only staff member that did stand by my side was my DHH teacher, Mrs. Evil. I want to leave you with one last quote that was made by one of the administrators in an email that was sent to my parents. "It is my sincere apology that I am not able to meet your requests and priorities. This is not our request. It was an idea that was presented to us, and it is sad that their priorities don't align with wanting to provide inclusion in a safe learning environment for all students. For a district that prides themselves on their unified program, I am saddened that they could not make this class work for myself and three of my peers. I know that nothing will change for, as far as this class goes for me, but I am here tonight to advocate for the future Deaf of Hard of Hearing students that are a part of our district. My hope is that all students would have access to this class or a similar class so that they can become more educated on the Deaf of Hard of Hearing community and culture, and just learn a different foreign language. Our district needs to do better, and I will continue to advocate and fight for us. If you have any further questions about my experience, my parents and I will be more than happy to visit with you further. Thank you for your time."
Thank you very much, Whitney. That was really well-written and well-delivered. I appreciate your comments. For those who may be watching who don't understand the citizen's comment format, it's not a question-and-answer session back and forth with the citizen addresses the board with their comments, but please understand that whenever we have student or community member concerns, we meet with and communicate with the families ahead of time and after the fact as well. So we will continue to work on the issues that you've presented us, Whitney, and thank you very much. I think you said you had another activity to go to, so you're welcome to, to be excused if you'd like to. Thank you for coming. Moving on to item number five, fiscal stability and our consent agenda. The consent agenda consists of minutes from October 21st and personnel matters. And we received this information about a week in advance, and members have the opportunity to ask questions, which we have done this week. Is there any discussion, more questions about the consent agenda items? And seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Melissa Curtis, seconded by Casey Root. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda items, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, please say no. And the motion passes six-zero. Moving on to our collaborative connections and resolution for acceptance of gifts. Every meeting, we talk about how extraordinarily generous the community is to our school district, and this week is no different. And I'm going to have Superintendent Olson talk about the donations we have received this cycle.
All right, the first donation is from Modern Companies Incorporated for $3,100 for the reimbursement for storage containers used to store trap shooting material at the range. The next two, I will describe briefly here. These both relate to the program that is a community initiative that I spoke about last meeting called Rally to Read. It has two offshoots. The first one is for zero-to-four-year-olds, and the second one came from that meeting where there is now an offshoot of a secondary or Monticello High School Library Initiative falling under their umbrella of Rally to Read in hopes to seek donors for additional funding for books at our secondary Monticello High School Library level. And so, the Weidem Foundation donated $8,000 to the zero-to-four-year-old programming that I explained last week. Frank and Joan Ope donated $500 for the Rally to Read Monticello High School Library Initiative. And then the Monticello Lions Club donated $5,000 for our Magic Closet at our high school. So those are the big, huge donations coming forward here today to you.
For those who can do quick mental math, that's $16,600. That's pretty amazing. So we do have a resolution for the acceptance of gifts?
Therefore, it be resolved by the Monticello School Board Number 882 to gratefully accept the following donations. Modern Companies Incorporated, $3,100 reimbursement for storage containers used to store trap shooting materials. The Weidem Foundation, $8,000 for the Rally to Read program. Frank and Joan Ope, $500 for the Rally to Read program. And the Monticello Lions Club, $5,000 for the Magic Closet.
Second.
Resolution read by Member Jeff Hegley, seconded by Member Melissa Curtis. All those in favor of accepting the donations as presented, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say no. And the resolution passes six-zero. Now we get to kind of a fun part of the meeting, and we're going to, we have all three of our student representatives here today. Willa Sharma is with us, and she had a sports conflict earlier this year, so was not able to attend a couple of the meetings. But we have Willa Sharma, A.T. Thompson, and Cohen Schlangen that are going to give their student representative report. Welcome to the podium.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Willa Sharma, and I'm a senior at Monticello High School. This year, I had the honor of serving as one of the captains of our women's soccer team, and additionally, I play on our Monticello varsity lacrosse team. Beyond sports, I am proud to have served as our student council president, where I advocate for our peers and work to improve our school's community. I'm also involved with Unified Program on their exec board, promoting inclusivity and support for all students. In my academic pursuits, I challenge myself with a variety of college-level courses, including orchestra, history, chemistry, psychology, Spanish, economics, and university of writing. Each of these classes has not only deepened my knowledge, but also have prepared me for my future challenges. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself today.
Thank you, Willa.
All right. First up on the agenda tonight is the fall sports update. I'm going to start with football. Football finished the regular season with a six-and-two record, clinching the number-one seed in the section. From there, we hosted Park Center, beating them last Saturday. This past Friday, Monticello hosted their first-ever section final game, in which we won 19-0 against Spring Lake Park, clinching our first ticket to state since 1988. My parents were eight years old last time we went to state. It's been a long time. We play our first game in the state tournament this Saturday in Forest Lake against Elk River at 4:00 p.m. Next up is boys' cross-country. The boys' cross-country team took fourth in sections, with senior Samir Gupta qualifying for state. Gupta ran well this Saturday, according to team captains. A team highlight was running on their home course for the Mississippi Conference Finals, doing well both on varsity and JV levels. Boys' soccer. The boys' soccer team finished the regular season 10-4 and 4, tying for first in the conference with Princeton. In section play, they matched up well in a hard-fought game against Delano, though losing 1-0. As far as the season highlight goes, there were 15 seniors on the varsity roster, showing the growth of a team throughout the years. Many thought it was cool to start and end their careers with the same group of guys.
Now continuing that with girls' soccer, the girls' soccer season concluded with a record of 8, 8, and 2, securing fourth place in the conference and earning the fifth seed in our section. A highlight was the impressive victory over Becker in the first round. However, we faced a tough challenge next round, losing to Zimmerman 0-1. Additionally, girls' cross-country has had a solid season. Though records can be tricky to quantify, they have achieved three third-place finishes, three second-place finishes, and two top-15 placements in major events like Alexandria, with 30 teams competing. They finished fourth at conference and third at sections. Isabel Mahoney was their standout runner, placing 12th out of 157 at state. A key highlight was their second-place finish at the Home Invitational. Girls' tennis season wrapped up with an impressive conference record of 6-1, earning them the title of conference champs for the first time since 2013. While the team won't have any representatives at the state level, they demonstrated a strong competitiveness, securing sixth seed in their section play. Girls' volleyball team has had an impressive season, finishing with a record of 18 and 13 as the seventh seed. They are also set to face the second seed, Marshall, on Wednesday in the state tournament. This matchup is a significant opportunity for them to showcase their resilience and teamwork throughout the years. And now in swimming, girls' swimming season has been exceptional, finishing with an impressive record of 14-0. As they head into sections week, the team is uncertain of how many will qualify for the state competition, but they are currently ranked at top three in their class. A notable highlight of the season was securing third place at the true-team state competition, and the team has shattered 40 records, including pool meets, home meets, and the school records.
The last of our fall sports is the Coyotes. The Coyotes finished the regular season 8-1, while also clinching their first state berth in school history. They play either Friday or Saturday at White Bear Lake High School, with the time and opponent yet to be decided. When asked about their season highlight, Coach Grams talked about how they beat St. Cloud for the first time in school history, and how the team is hungry for a rematch of Park Center, the team responsible for their lone loss of the season. All right. Next up on our agenda is the National Honor Society meeting. The National Honor Society ceremony will take place on Monday, November 11th at 7:00 p.m. in the high school auditorium. This ceremony will recognize many juniors and seniors at MHS who display qualities in academic excellence, leadership, service, and character. There's not a final number of members who will be recognized, as those results are still being processed.
Next on the agenda is our high school musical. The musical this year will be Legally Blonde. The dates for the performance will be December 6th and 7th at 7:30 p.m., and then 8 at 2:00 p.m. The number of students involved, including cast, crew, tech, and orchestra, is over 40 students. Tickets will be sold at $11 for adults and $6 for students.
Good evening, board members. This year, the Monticello, the Monticello High School Veterans Day program will take place this upcoming Friday, November 8th at 9:30 a.m. As I was this year's boys' state representative, I'll have the opportunity to facilitate the event alongside the girls' state representative, Willa. And on behalf of Monticello High School, we would like to extend an invitation to you all formally. Moving on to the trimester system. From my perspective, the trimester system has been a great transition. With the new scheduling system, everything is much more stable, and I have more time to commit myself to schoolwork and extracurricular activities. However, as the days present us with enough time to get things done, the months, the months creep up. November 26th is this trimester's ending, and while everyone, and while everything has been following through, well, it seems rapid. About a week ago, I had the opportunity to briefly speak with the teacher, Mr. Sword, and discuss how the trimester system has been going. He mentioned how it supports him in a way that his students are often more awake and involved, in addition to everything being more steadily paced. Based on what I've seen and encountered, the student body also seems to be enjoying it well. Several students have mentioned how it allows them to get stuff done within their class periods, along with the fact they have more time to commit to themselves. In all, the transition from semester to trimester has been taken well, with minor concerns. Thank you.
Does that conclude your remarks? Is there any comments or questions from the board members for our student representatives? Oh, you're getting off easy tonight. So you can take your seats again. We'll let the rest of the folks know. The Minnesota School Boards Association has their annual state-level convention in December, I'm sorry, January, January 15th and 16th, and our three student reps will be joining us this year to participate in some of the student activities and the student professional development. So we're real excited to have you guys come in with us in January. So congratulations on that.
Nice job. You guys continue to just deliver just very authentic messages, but also very detailed, orientated, so that you represent a wide swath of our students and with great communication skills. Awesome to hear.
So moving on to teaching and learning, we have four presentations this evening from our youngest learners from our elementaries. And first, we're going to have Principal Kristen Green from Eastview Education Center going to present her goals presentation to the board and the community.
I'm a little shorter than our high school students, it seems. Good evening, Chair Ziebarth, school board members, Superintendent Olson, colleagues, and community. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to share with you the goals that we've set at Eastview Education Center for our youngest learners in our community. Starting right off the bat, what is our instructional goal this year? Our youngest learners, preschoolers and kindergartners in the building. Our goal is ultimately that our students learn how to be ready for school. And so, as you saw on the very first slide, we had a picture of our high school graduation ceremony. We start at the opposite end of the spectrum, and so we take students from three-years-old, four-years-old, five-years-old. They enter our building and our school community, and we teach them how to do school. So our goal for the year, once again, aligned with the A and I language, is that children are ready for school. What this means for our preschoolers is that they will be engaging this year, and they've actually already done their first assessment, in a standardized assessment. Our four-year-olds, who will be transitioning to kindergarten next year, engaged in that fast bridge for early childhood learners' assessment. Our goal for those students, they performed very well. What tells us that our community is really engaged in the learning they're doing at home with our students before they set foot into our school. Our goal for these students is that we show at least one year's worth of growth based on that spring assessment that we will do for them again. on that spring assessment that we will do for them again in probably May. We will assess these students again. So, their goal is a minimum of one-year's worth of growth, and that benchmark is designed by FastBridge. In kindergarten, I set a lofty goal with you last year, and we continue that work again this year. And so, the goal for kindergarten is, over the next three years, last year, we were able to achieve that goal, to get 54% of students at benchmark. This year, even loftier yet, and getting to 62% of kindergartners meeting that benchmark on the spring FastBridge assessment. How are we going to do that? Well, these are the measurable things that you will see teachers and staff working on with students. Our preschool teachers are engaged in letters or letters for early childhood. We are doing very intentional professional development and having data conversations even about our preschoolers. What are we learning? We're having conversations about what is it that we want them to know at age three, at age four, at age five? How do we know they know it? And what are we doing if they don't know it? So, real intentional conversations, even as our preschool staff with our youngest learners. Our preschool teachers are engaged in very explicit instruction around those foundational literacy skills, so really exposing to letters and symbols and sounds and books and immersing themselves in literature. In kindergarten, we're also engaging. Two of our kindergarten teachers have already completed letters. Eight of them are in their second year, finishing up probably in about January, most of them, and one is in the first year. So, building pretty high capacity on our kindergarten team, engaging in that science of reading. We continue to use a flexible group model to make sure that students are in groups based on other students who are learning right about their same level. That allows us to adjust our pace in what students are being exposed to, and if they need more practice on something, or perhaps they can move a bit quicker. We have, as an elementary team, shifted our Amplify units. Amplify is our comprehension resource that we're using. We noticed that in the past, we had sort of shifted some units around, and what we uncovered was there were some gaps in background knowledge as students went up through the grades. And so, as an elementary team, we shifted those so that we can ensure there's adequate background knowledge as students are moving up through the grades. We're using both Amplify and Functional Phonics again. And along with our Functional Phonics, we have Rose Johnson, who was honored just last week at the Leadership and Educational Excellence Awards up in St. Cloud. She is our reading coach at Eastview. She is a wealth of knowledge. She is well-respected on our staff, and she is engaging with teachers on a weekly basis, where there are observations and then coaching sessions around Functional Phonics. We are continuing to engage in PLCs as a kindergarten team, and we're really digging hard this year into the MTSS process and focusing a lot on our tier-one strategies and looking at data for that, who is, which 80% strategies are working for the 80% of students. Those are the measurable things. These are the goals that I shared with my team at Eastview to kick off our year. And our goals that align directly with, as you can see, our Monticello vision of a learner and all of that. Our first and foremost goal is that we're creating a nurturing environment for students. And the way that we're doing that is we are really studying the young brain this year. And so, we're working together to understand those neural pathways that are built from birth to age five, and what sort of neural pathways do we maybe need to shift and adjust now that they've entered formal schooling. Creating that nurturing environment and building relationships aligns with that safe and healthy culture piece. Literacy, we're showing innovation and leadership through our intensive study of the science of reading, letters work, and engaging in deliberate PLCs. I'll speak a bit more later on about our vision of a learner goal, being effective communicators, both students and staff. We are working collaboratively and building connections through our PLC partnerships and the cohorts for letters that we're engaged in. And finally, I'll share with you our mantra, if you will, for the year, and that's really to keep it all in perspective. And what I challenged our staff with this year was, every time you're talking about kids, any statement you make, any question you have, it ends with these words. And you'll notice there's an asterisk after the "five" because we have three-year-olds, four-year-olds, and five-year-olds. But every time you're talking about a kid, I want you to say, "And they're five," because it really helps you bring back that perspective of the students that are in our building that we're working with. So, as educators, we can get really up here and, as you speak, and what do we want? What strategies are we using? What's working? What's the data showing? And our students every day show up and remind us to always end it with, "And they're five." Or maybe we end it with, "And they're three." Thirty-six months they've been on this planet, and let's remember what we're asking them to do. What you'll see students doing is engaging in those explicit learning activities. For example, in preschool, identifying letters, numbers, they're beginning to form symbols, connecting those symbols to letters of the alphabet, and really being curious about books and print, telling stories to each other, recalling details from stories. We're increasing their stamina. That's a big thing at Eastview. At this time of year, sitting for 10 minutes is a pretty lofty task when you're three, or four, or five. And so, we're working hard to build that stamina for educational tasks. We're also working how to have appropriate interactions and that self-regulation. At kindergarten, you will see us continue to flex across the color team to engage with students performing at their academic level. We continue with Amplify and Functional Phonics, literacy-rich lessons across all of our curricular areas, teaching students to make connections to what they're hearing in stories and print, and then also to still building stamina and learning those self-regulation and appropriate interactions through some of our Amplify stories, as well as Character Strong. For our students, the things that maybe aren't as data-measurable are that we want them to be curious, we want them to be playful, and we just want them to be five. So, show up each day who they are, and when we give them a nurturing space where they can show up in that way, the sky's the limit. They come bouncing in the door, either out of the car or off the bus each day, and our job is to meet them where they're at and create experiences where they're going to still feel curious, playful, and five. As I mentioned, our vision of a learner goal this year is that all students and staff at Eastview are effective communicators. Back in August, I share with my staff, my challenge to them are a couple of things around communication. First and foremost, it is to think very carefully about how we're speaking of students, what exactly we're saying about students, to whom we're speaking to students, that whole confidentiality piece, and really honoring the integrity of every child when we're communicating about students. I've given my staff another mantra last year, they can probably hear it in their heads, that I challenged them, that every time you're talking about a student, think to yourself, "Everyone is someone's Michaela." Michaela is the name of my oldest daughter, and so I want them to think about, "Everyone's someone's Michaela." And you're gonna get a different Kristen Green if you're talking out of turn about my Michaela. And every mom, or dad, or grandparent, or guardian feels that close and safe about, wants their child to feel that safe in a space. So, really, as we're talking about students, to keep that in mind. And then, we're teaching our students how to communicate. We're teaching our students how to interact appropriately with their peers. How do you say, "I didn't like that," without bopping someone across the head, or throwing the toy across the room, or maybe feeling really quiet and not being able to express your thoughts? And so, we're giving them the language to use their words for the feelings they're having, and also how to become part of this classroom community. And so, in conclusion, I want you to remember that through our instructional goals and strategies that we're using, through the amazing staff that are at Eastview that show up every day, working extremely hard, with smiles, with a fresh start for themselves and for students every day, our students, there's not much happier place than at Eastview. The kids come bouncing in, excited to be with us each day. And our vision of a learner, all of it aligns with our mantra for this year, which is, "And they're five." Thank you for your time this evening to let me boast a bit about the amazing place that is Eastview.
Thank you, Kristen. Is there any questions for Kristen from the board?
I have a quick question for you. You had described your flexible grouping model. Is that something that you just started this year, or was that started last year when you guys started revamping the curriculum?
We started our flexible grouping model last year.
Obviously, saw some good success.
We did. We didn't get it rolling till about December, January for some teams last year, because we were learning exactly what the logistics were going to be. And we hadn't done it at Eastview before. We jumped in, it was very successful. You'd be amazed that five- and six-year-olds, when it's time to switch classrooms, just like up at the high school, they know where to go, they've got their materials, off they go. They're getting a chance to work with another teacher and another group of peers. And so, yep, we're ready to launch, getting set to begin that before conferences this
Anyone else? Students, do you have any questions?
I have one quick question that might be of interest to the community as well. Can you tell us what the total enrollment is in the preschool program? Roughly.
Oh, my team is sitting in the audience. 230, 240?
And so, do we, I'm thinking we probably have some data now, because we've had the program for several years. Roughly, what percentage of those students from the preschool program continue on with us in kindergarten?
I think we're at about 60% are in our preschool program that launch up into our community.
I think that's a really important piece of information for the community, is that there's a lot of continuity. We're not losing a lot of students. We're building on the skills and academic skills that they're learning in preschool, so.
And that's something we're working real hard on, Jen, Jeremiah, and myself, is to really build that we don't have, just because we're in separate hallways, that we really have one cohesive early childhood program, so that when students move from one hallway to the next, they know what's expected of them, and it's a familiar learning space.
Is there anybody on the waiting list for that program at this point in time? So, everybody that wanted a spot was able to get one, so I think that's another important piece for the community. If you have a student that's coming up on preschool-aged and you're interested in our preschool programs, early is better than later.
We've got lots of opportunities. We've got half-day, full-day, couple-days-a-week, five-days-a-week, so whatever fits families' needs. But it's a great space to get started and a great way to become part of our school community.
Anyone else for Kristen? Thank you, Kristen.
Thank you for your time.
Now, we have Nicole Carteau from Little Mountain Elementary, principal. She's gonna give us her program of goals and outcomes this year. Thank you, welcome, Nicole.
Thank you. Good evening, Superintendent Olson, Board Chair Ziebarth, and school board members, and student representatives. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm excited to share some work with you. We've experienced some challenges and successes at Little Mountain already this fall. And so, here is an update. Some will sound familiar to what you've heard in the past, and then some things will be definitely a change. I'm gonna start with our vision of a learner goal. We did decide to stick with persons of integrity as our focus this year. We've really built our SCL block and model around this, and we do feel at the elementary that teaching them to do the right thing, even when no one is watching, is very important. And also, just to be mindful of how their words and actions affect themselves and others around them. So, we continue to work on that. Here are some of the observables you will see at Little Mountain. Again, we have that SCL block built into our schedule, so we're very mindful of starting our day intentionally to support students. We let them come in and do some of these activities through our new Character Strong curriculum, which just is a good way to start the tone for the day. They have a space to share and build relationships and just start the day in a safe environment. As I mentioned, Character Strong is that new SCL curriculum, and each month, we have a new theme. So, so far, we have focused on respect and responsibility. And then, our November theme is gratitude, which is very fitting with Thanksgiving this month. And so, we're just looking at ways we can be thankful for all that we have. We will be doing a student council food drive in November as well, just to kind of go along with that theme and a way we can give back to our community. Our instructional goal is working towards that district goal of 70% of students meeting benchmark by the winter of 2026. We did not meet our goal last year, so we did keep that same 3% increase. We want it to be obtainable for our staff and students. We are seeing really great growth with some changes this fall, so I'm looking forward to sharing that with you this evening. Students will continue to take those FastBridge assessments, and we will participate, or they will participate in age-appropriate academic goal-setting. This is a change that was added to our teacher evaluation system this year, so we're having staff work on age-appropriate ways where they can have students reflect on their learning and kind of self-assess and take pride in that process. So, that will be a change for students this year. You'll hear me talking tonight about our WIN time model, which has changed, and it has stretched our staff a bit this year. But students are receiving additional instructional support throughout the day that we have not been able to provide in the past, and I'll explain a little more about that later. Our students are participating in evidence-based instruction. Of course, we have many of our teachers going through Science of Reading training, and so our instructional practices are improving through that, and our students will take time to celebrate success. Our staff are providing, or being provided, that Read Act training. We have quite a few who have finished it, many who are in year two, and then some that are just starting. So, we're a little bit all over the board, but we're excited that all staff at the elementary level will have that opportunity. Our staff is working very close with our reading coach, Stephanie Hamilton, to make those data-driven decisions during our PLC time. Stephanie has been a great leader, and I do need to give a shout-out. She was at the, or our Leah Award winner. We got to celebrate with her last week, and she is just doing such great work with our teams and helping guide really difficult conversations this year, and pushing them out of their comfort zones a little bit, but she has just been imperative. So, thank you again for providing us those reading coach positions. It is making a huge difference. Our staff, like I talked, is changing our WIN time model, so it stands for "What I Need." And in the past, a lot of our students would go get speech services, maybe social work, special education services, EL services, and those things are all still happening during that time. But the students that are left in the classroom are getting much more intentional instructional support in math and reading. And so, I'll show you some data at the end that is showing that our work is really making a difference. It has been a challenge for staff, as they're teaching much harder than they've taught in the past, and so we've had some learning pains through that, but I think they're starting to see that their hard work is paying off. Our staff is in year two of Amplify curriculum adoption, and this year, as Kristen said, we've kind of revamped the order of some of the units we're doing, and we're also adding in some new units. While it is year two, we are still experiencing some new learning opportunities within that curriculum. We are focusing a lot on our MTSS model at Little Mountain. We talk a lot about MTSS and how all of the work that we do is under the MTSS umbrella, but what I was realizing is staff doesn't always see how that ties together. So, Stephanie Nordstog, our new MTSS coordinator, has been out to the building to really help staff understand and see how really, again, everything we do is under that model. And so, we'll continue that work with Stephanie in our building, as it's important for staff to see how everything we're doing is connected to student success. And then, we're just being more intentional again about sharing progress with students and families, and then trying to find the celebrations along the way. In a recent coffee chat we had with Eric Olson, a few challenges came up from staff. And so, what we've noticed with our school start time change, our instructional day is a little shorter, and even though it's only 10 minutes, that does make things feel really crammed. And so, we're just trying to work through how we can best use the minutes of the day and also help teachers feel like they have time to breathe a little bit with their students as well. Substitute teacher and also ESS shortages did come up as a concern, so we have worked with our staff on some backup plans if and when we do not have those positions filled. And then, we did see a little bit of change in school climate this fall, which was hard because Little Mountain has been known as a wonderful place to be, and it still is. But again, some of these challenges were just weighing really heavily on staff this fall. Kathy Hamel will tell you that every, even a bad day at Little Mountain is a good day, and she is right. But we'll keep working with our staff just to continue to improve that climate again and get back to where we were before. I have a few celebrations to share. Family engagement, obviously, being a district goal is something we're taking very seriously at Little Mountain. And this fall, we're excited, our PTO has a full PTO board, which has been awesome. We have better family engagement in our PTO than we've had in the past. in our PTO than we've had in the past. And so, we'll continue to work through that. We have added school-wide Title I status, which you've heard about, which is just giving us more opportunities to better support all of our learners. One of my favorite celebrations has been the addition of our Setting Three DCD program to our building. It has added a layer that we didn't realize we were missing. So, it just makes it feel better that we're representing all students at Little Mountain, which is great. We did catalyst training in August, and that is kind of a mix of classroom management and student engagement strategies, which our staff has really enjoyed. And we actually have the next two-hour training tomorrow morning. And through that, we're providing some coaching opportunities as well for staff through our staff development funds. So, that is an exciting opportunity. And then, you heard me talk about win time, so I do just wanna show you this visual that Stephanie Hamilton put together. So, long story short, we're seeing really great growth. You can see that we've had, we did a six-week check, which is a new kind of progress monitoring we've added. And so, we had sixty-four percent of our students meet their grade-level growth goal and eighty-five percent overall see positive growth in their scores. And you can see some other numbers there on kids jumping from one level to the next, which is great. But what I wanna point out at the bottom, last year, we didn't do a data check until about thirteen weeks in and sixteen weeks in first grade. And this year, we have seen just as much, if not more, improvement in our six weeks of instruction in most or all of our grade levels, which is just amazing. So, this is measuring words per minute that the students can read. And part of our win time shift has been some very specific fluency practice, which we realized was missing. And so, to see these numbers within six weeks, when it took us at least thirteen, if not more, weeks to get there last year, has been really exciting. So, once again, our staff are working harder than ever. I'm so proud of them, proud of our reading coach and all the work we're doing. And we are seeing some really good growth already, so it's very exciting to see. And thank you for supporting us. I'll open it up for questions.
At the beginning, you talked about the social-emotional block that you've implemented throughout the whole building. How many minutes long is that roughly?
It's a thirty-minute block, but by the time they get attendance done and we do a daily morning news, that's probably more like twenty. Yep.
So, the whole school then is working, I bring up SCL just because it's a highly, high-interest area for parents. They wanna know, what are we doing with that? They're worried that, you know, we might be doing something that we shouldn't be doing. But I think in our district, we've always kept it to concepts that are really beneficial for students to have over their lifetimes, such as resilience and integrity. So, you take one of those concepts, like integrity, and the whole school is working on it at once? Is that what you're doing?
Yeah, and it's been a really great way to just bring everybody together. And I forgot to mention too, our, the curriculum even has games that can be taught. So, our FIA teachers are teaching games based on respect or responsibility, gratitude, that the students, we hope, then take out to recess and can play out there as well. So, basically, each week, you have five lessons that align with the theme. So, respect, responsibility, gratitude, kindness, honesty, trustworthiness, there's all these themes throughout the year. And we've committed as a building leadership team that we would make sure all students experience every, all of the five lessons in one week's time to equal that month of instruction. So, it is really just teaching them good character values, how to be kind to others.
We always did a lot of that, but we just didn't have a name for it, maybe?
For sure. And especially at the elementary level, it's a lot of, we're constantly teaching them in the moment those skills, but it's nice to have that dedicated time to talk. And like I said, just kind of set the tone for the day.
Any other questions for Ms. Carteau from Little Mountain?
What do you attribute the success in the last slide that you were showing in your six-week evaluation versus the thirteen-week evaluations from last year that you're seeing now that you didn't see last year?
I think there's for sure two pieces to that. So, we've noticed in our Amplify reading curriculum that the teachers are teaching more in front of the students and they're had, it's more, I don't wanna say lecture, but more teacher talk. And so, we've been more intentional about getting students reading books in their hands. We had to try to find a balance. So, I think that's part of it. We just spend intentional on building in more reading time for students. And then, during that win time model, part of what they receive during their reading time is fluency practice. So, specific interventions, trying to increase their words per minute.
Just to clarify your answer to Jamie there, was, were you saying there's more teacher time in front of the students now?
In the reading curriculum, it is teacher-heavy. Yep. And so, we're working, I think year one, it was hard because they were trying to figure out how to deliver a curriculum. And now, we're finding ways where we can find more student voice and again, get more reading in their hands, more student time to talk. But as you're learning a new curriculum, that doesn't always just come naturally.
You're just comparing years one and two under the new curriculum, not looking back to the prior curriculum?
Correct. Yes. Which I only had one year of the original curriculum to compare.
Can you tell us where you were at, where you landed at goal? You wanted to be at seventy percent, so you didn't meet it. I didn't catch where you landed.
Off the top of my head, I believe our building average was fifty-two percent. So, lots of room to grow.
And so, now, we're saying we're still working toward seventy percent. So, is the goal seventy percent this year?
No, the district school is to hit the seventy percent by winter of 2026. So, we have some time to do that. So, we're easing our way towards it. Yep.
Any other board members or student members? Go ahead. Does she, pass her microphone down, please.
I was just wondering how you're finding teachers are adapting to this new area of teaching where they're doing a lot more teaching with the students and work with the students, and how they're able to balance that so that there isn't burnout through your staff?
That's a great question. I think as a staff, we're really intentional about checking in with each other, taking care of each other. We love to do treats and different things just to kind of bring us together and spend quality time together. As far as the teaching strategies go, that catalyst training that I talked about really does help with any student behaviors or engagement concerns that they might have in the classroom. So, trying to provide PD, that's really helpful, that they can implement right away to help kind of make their teaching job easier. And then, I think, again, having that reading coach is really helpful and just any support we can provide them academically. And our reading coach is making copies for them sometimes just to take something off of their plate. We have volunteers coming in. Our high school helpers are awesome as well that come in. So, just kind of all hands on deck. Thanks for asking. That's a great question.
Any other questions for Principal Carteau? Well, thank you, Nicole. Appreciate your time this evening. And next, we're gonna hear from Principal Shelley Gilmore and Assistant Principal Clay Norman from the Pinewood Elementary regarding their goals presentation. Welcome, Shelley and Clay. Look sharp, Clay.
Thanks for noticing.
Good evening, Chair Zeebarth, board members, Superintendent Olson, and student representatives and our community. I wanna thank you for this opportunity to talk about Pinewood Elementary. We want to first start with some celebrations that we're seeing. As you've heard from Eastview and Little Mountain, we have had a lot of change, and we are embracing this change with a lot of dedication and hard work. And as Willa was saying and recognizing, it's not easy. And there are growing pains with that, and we're working through those growing pains to help ensure that we've got a good balance between delivering the content that we need to deliver and also having time to meet individual student needs. We are finding that we are having high levels of implementation with our new catalyst system. So, we are also having a training tomorrow on part two of that. And it's just fun to walk throughout the building and see that the training that they've received so far is making such a difference in their instruction and levels of engagement and behavior management. Another celebration is we're entering year two of our curriculum implementation. It is a heavy lift to go from a balanced literacy approach to a structured literacy approach. And the learning that we've done from last year to this year has been incredible. And the implementation of this new learning has also been incredible. We continue to refine our practices, and when we know better, we do better. It's exciting to see the new things that we're finding. We are honoring students every month who exemplify our key character traits in Character Strong. So, we have two students from each class that are honored for, respect was September, responsibility was October, and then we'll find our students that are displaying the components of gratitude in November. We had a lunchroom remodel over the summer, and we'll have the last piece of it over the December break. And that remodel has really gone well. We're able to get students through the cafeteria much faster than we have in the past. So, it's been great. So, our instructional goal is the same goal of seventy percent of students being proficient in winter of 2026. We also did not meet our goal last spring, and so, we are still focusing on that three percent growth from spring of twenty-four to spring of twenty-five. We have reflected on our practices, and there's a few things that we're doing differently to help ensure that we achieve our goal. One is that we are ensuring that all students have access to grade-level instruction. In the past, we were providing instruction to students at their achievement level. And what we found is that there are some students who were in first grade, and it could be at the end of first grade, they were still working on kindergarten fields. So, our focus is providing grade-level instruction and providing the extra scoops that they need to fill the holes during that win time. That might be happening during pull-out instruction from our intervention teachers. It also may be happening from classroom teachers within that win time. We have also found that our curriculum, both Amplify and functional phonics are overbuilt. And so, we're being very intentional on making sure that our instruction is aligning to the standards. And anything that isn't aligning to the standards, we are thoughtfully removing. So, we're trying to cut out the fluff to make sure that kids are getting what they need. So, it really is a balance between making sure that students are getting the content that they need and also being able to be proficient in the content and skills that they're being exposed to. So, what we found is we need to slow down a little bit. Instead of trying to be at a pace that is really rigorous, again, it's a balance. What is best for our students? What is going to give our teachers a chance to realize, okay, eighty percent of our students aren't mastering these concepts right now? We need to slow down so we can reteach and then move forward again. So, a lot of good lessons have been learned. And one other piece is, is time. Like Nicole mentioned, that ten minutes may not seem like a lot, but it has really made an impact. And so, we're trying to be, again, very thoughtful about what are things that, what are things we can cut out without making a difference on the integrity of the curriculum. For our staff observables, we are having data-driven PLCs, and we are working through grade-level teams with collective efficacy. We have such amazingly talented staff at Pinewood, and the answer to most questions are right in the room. So, allowing those teachers to bounce the ideas off each other and determining what is going to work. We have data-driven PLCs, not only at our tier-one level, which is at the classroom level, but also in our intervention level, where they're looking at students that are pulled out for intervention and what is it, are we moving kids? Are they making progress? If they're not making progress, what do we need to do differently to help ensure that they are? And we're also beginning to work on data-driven PLCs with our special education teachers and students. We are providing tiered interventions. So, as I said before, when proficiency is below eighty percent, teachers are slowing down and able to reteach either during that instructional period or during win time. Throughout everything that we do, we are making sure that we're embedding the SCL, the social-emotional learning through Character Strong, and also the catalyst. So, we're finding that we're really having some great levels of engagement and finding that the tier-one for behavior management is working well. Our, we have a reading curriculum focus. As you know, we're using our evidence-based practices that we're learning either through letters or through OLA. And we're going to be working as we move on, being intentional of building a bridge from what we're learning in theory and what that looks like in practice. And then, we've got a fantastic group of teacher leaders that are leading with a focus on best practice and data-driven instruction. We also have a number of student observables. So, you will see students showing growth from their current level. I, we just finished our six-week check, so I don't have our data available for you. I'm excited to look at it. I'm hoping it looks as great as it does at Little Mountain. It's excited, it's exciting to see the growth on the changes that we're doing that we have found that needs to be done based on year one. Students are participating in evidence-based instruction based on their needs, either within the classroom, within pull-out intervention, or in special education, small groups. We're also, students are demonstrating higher levels of engagement, regulation, and problem-solving with their peers. And you would be able to see them applying the strategies that they're learning based on the science of reading. Clay is going to be talking about our vision of a learner goal.
Okay, good evening. So, this year, we are focusing on being effective communicators. Last year, our focus was resiliency, and so, we moved to communication this year. And we, teachers will utilize a Character Strong curriculum to increase student skills and area of effective communication. We want these skills to be transferred from Character Strong to the academic arenas. The goal this year is to get through eighty percent of the lessons in the first year of implementation. And you can see the character traits, character traits that are covered there. So, we are focused on one per month with a monthly focus. As Shelley mentioned, we are trying to recognize building-wide students that are showing that particular traits and going above and beyond each month. There we go. So, what you'll see educators doing, implementing the Character Strong lessons, modeling effective communication through the use of Character Strong, and making connections with effective communication and the SCL, effective communication and structural setting. So, really taking it from that SCL time that is in the morning to start each day and trying to apply it throughout the day, which feeds into what our students will be doing. So, engaging in those lessons, applying the strategies from lessons to situations in their school day. Be really great if that was during recess and when there's snow on the ground. Demonstrate effective communication during discussions and actions with peers, use effective communication skills in instructional application. And just an update on our attendance data. So, just two months in right now, and so, you can see September and October there. For an exact number, the blue and red lines on the left side, which is the total of all students, are right around ninety-four to ninety-five percent. We did take out a couple areas because there was only one student indicated in those areas, data privacy. And so, looking ahead, throughout this year, we'll continue to work on tier-one instruction with intentional planning and delivery of instruction in tier-one, continue to work on engagement strategies, use our building and district resources to drive improvement, and continue to support our fantastic and very hard-working staff who are very dedicated to our students. And I'd like to open up to questions.
Questions or comments from the board or student representatives?
I have one question. Shelley, on your comment about the curriculum being overbuilt, does it mean you think going forward it's overbuilt or right now for what the students are ready to be at level-wise because it's so brand-new for each age that it's too much right now?
That is a fantastic question. So, there's a few ways to answer that. First, the Amplify itself, we'll say that it's overbuilt, that there's too much there. The second piece with that is that as we have more experience in teaching Amplify, we'll be able to get more of those pieces in. We wanna be good at, at the, at the essential components first. There are intervention components that we haven't dug deep into yet. Other pieces with it being overbuilt is, for example, in third through fifth grade, they have morphology components. in, um, third through fifth grade, they have morphology components. We're using functional morphology, which is a part of functional phonics through carry. And what we're finding right now is that those pieces through, um, functional morphology really are more aligned to the science of reading than, um, the pieces that we're finding in Amplify right now. So, we're looking at, um, it's not easy to extract those pieces. And as we, again, learn that curriculum and we become more fluent in using that curriculum, we'll be able to easily, more easily say, alright, this morphology piece is not as of high quality as the morphology piece that we're teaching elsewhere, we're going to take that out. So, it's all a part of instructional decision-making and, um, making sure that our kids are getting what they need. Um, there's so much to Amplify that, um, that isn't necessary in order for kids to, um, to be able to get the content and the skills that they need to be successful. So, it's, it's good and bad. If we had it just exactly how we needed it, um, that would make things a little more simply, or simple. With it being more robust as we get better, then we can take a look at these other pieces and the knowledge that we have through the education and the science of reading. What is it that we need to provide our students the best instruction possible? Water.
I have a question. Um, it's kind of a, a combination question for Nicole as well, because I know the two, uh, principals work very closely together. Um, so, it's a little difficult question, so we, we saw that you didn't meet your goals last year. You're in the fifties, basically, between the two schools, which is actually remarkably consistent between both buildings. What have you, um, done in terms of, like, a, a look back to see, are there similarities? Is there a certain cohort at a certain grade level, um, that appears to need a little bit more help? Um, some of the national stuff that I've been reading said that our third graders, second and third graders nationally are coming out of COVID in a different place than fourth and fifth graders and kindergarten, first graders. So, I'm just wondering if you've, if you've roundtabled that and kind of done a deconstruct, like, okay, which group, you know, have we drilled down and?
Yes, we have. We have.
And I'm sorry to, I'm sorry to bring up things that are not entirely positive.
No, I'm, I'm glad that you're asking. We have found that our third graders are the group, um, that are the furthest behind. And what we're doing for them right now is they are receiving the third-grade curriculum, but they're also receiving some, um, second-grade level instruction in the area of phonics. And it's something that is not easy for our third-grade teachers to balance. We're still tweaking some things on how we can make things, um, work better within the schedule. And that's something that can be different from building to building. But, um, basically, what we're finding is for our second-grade students, we've got them mapped out to be on track, to be at the end of the second-grade expectations. Last year, um, our second graders, um, coming into third grade, they, they just weren't there yet. Like, part of it is the change to structured literacy instead of balanced literacy. So, now that we know better, um, we're doing better. Part of it is also COVID-related, but it is, it is, um, you know, it is concerning. But it's also very reassuring that it is not just at Pinewood, it's at Little Mountain as well.
Nationally. I mean, it isn't just our district.
Absolutely.
When I'm reading, that cohort is struggling nationwide, so.
Yes. So, we're trying, trying to give them the tools that they need to be successful at fourth grade.
Thank you for, for answering that. Any, any further discussion or questions for Shelley and Clay?
Just a quick, um, clarification. Can you, uh, elaborate on the balanced versus the structured for us?
Yes, yes, I can. So, um, balanced literacy was more about, is more about using context clues in learning how to read. So, you would look at maybe the first letter of what the word said, or you would look at, um, what a picture showed in order to try to figure out what the text was saying. Um, what structured literacy is, has a greater focus on is phonics. So, really understanding what the letter sounds are, um, what the letter sounds represent, how those letter sounds, um, are put together to form words. So, it really is a roadmap on using the sounds and words and sentences and phrases to understand what a person is reading instead of, um, having the mindset that a number of students are going to learn how to read no matter what you do. And the rest, um, they'll just get it, they just need to be exposed to more text. With structured literacy, we're more intentional in what we're doing in looking at those letter patterns.
Anyone else? Well, thank you for being on the hot seat for us and answering some tough questions. We appreciate that.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Yep. And to round out our teaching and learning presentations this evening, we have Director of Teaching and Learning Cindy Fasching and Superintendent Eric Olson to talk about District Goals presentation.
As we get kicked off here, um, I would like to just kind of start by, um, making a transition from the building presentations to Cindy, um, just by reminding all of us as we, uh, move forward through, um, any school year that, uh, this school year, um, our, our teachers, our staff, um, are learning more than they ever have, and they're applying more than they ever have, and we're really proud of them. Um, and then we're, so as we go around the building, whether they're for fall meetings, staff coffee chats, we're making sure that we get a pulse of what's going on. And, um, there's no doubt that, uh, because of the newness and because of some of the things that we're doing and building here in the district, it does, um, create a little bit of anxiety. With that said, we know that life is about balance and, and bringing a balance into what we're doing here. Um, and I'm not talking balanced literacy, I'm talking about a balance between the science of teaching and the art of teaching. So, even Jeff Hagley and I went to college about the same time. And even when we were in college back then, science and art of, of teaching would have been concepts that we learned. And so, the art of teaching is the relationships that you build, and that is the, where it all starts. And our district has been phenomenal at building relationships. That is who we are known for, who we have been known for. But we haven't all, always kept up with some of the scientific best practices. And hence, that's why we built, um, the, uh, Science of Reading Skills and then also, um, the MTSS, which are systems of scientific support that you give children. And so, making a, a, um, finding out that balance is what we are seeing that we need to do. But, uh, please don't ever forget that, that, that everything starts at the art, and then you have to equally prepare best practices in the science in order to truly get maximize, uh, gains for your students. So, I just wanted to make a, a connection back to a concept that's been around a lot. We just have been very good at building the relationships and caring for and loving for kids, but we also have to build the systems of, of, uh, scientific supports so that we have the best practice, um, arsenal in our tool belt.
Alright, thank you. Well, good evening, everyone. Um, Chair Zebards, uh, school board members, Superintendent Olson, uh, student representatives, thank you for coming, uh, and audience members. Uh, thanks for having me back. I was at the last board meeting, and I gave a presentation on the summary of our twenty-three, twenty-four World's Best Workforce Goals and District Achievement Goals, and then talked a little bit about, um, our new goals for twenty-four, twenty-five. And so, uh, when I ended my presentation, I was left with some questions, especially the question that said, uh, is this an anomaly to Monticello? Is this something that's happening across the nation, across the state, across our local districts? And we especially were talking about third grade and the struggles in third grade. So, you asked me to bring back some data, so I have that for you tonight. This first chart talks about the National Assessment of Educational Progress, or otherwise known as the NAEP. Uh, we have a NAEP, Reading and Math Assessment, so I'm just going to be talking about the reading assessment right now. This is otherwise known as the Nation's Report Card. And what they do is they send testing crews to random districts from across every state, across the country. Monticello participated last year, by the way, in, uh, math and reading, so they would be part of data in twenty, uh, twenty-twenty-four when we get it. But this chart is for twenty-twenty-two, and it shows the nation's progress for fourth graders in twenty-twenty-two. I didn't have anything for third grade, but this is fourth grade in twenty-twenty-two. You'll see that the nation's progress was thirty-two percent of our students were at proficiency on the NAEP test across the country. And the color coding is there were eight states that were above that thirty-two percent average. There were thirty-seven states that were right about at the thirty-two percent average and seven below that average. The dark colors are those ones that were higher. You'll see Minnesota was right in the middle at the, in the thirty-seven states that scored at the average. In fact, we were right exactly at thirty-two percent in Minnesota in twenty-twenty-two for our fourth graders. When we look at the next chart, it looks at the progress made between two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty-two. Again, we're looking at fourth graders. And you'll see that there were zero states in all of the United States, no one made, uh, progress, uh, achievement progress. No one went up. Twenty-two states stayed about the same, and thirty states went about, went down in their average for fourth graders. We were amongst the states that went down in our average for fourth grade reading. If you look at the chart on the right, the little crosses are Minnesota and the circles are, um, across the United States. But you can see all the way back when NAEP started in nineteen ninety-two, they started testing, you'll see that the nation really has made no progress. We started in nineteen ninety-two at, um, two hundred and twenty-one was our average score, and we ended at two hundred and sixteen in, uh, twenty-twenty-two. The nation was similar. They started where they ended. So, the question is, why are we not making any progress? And, um, it has a lot to do with a lot of different things, but, um, COVID in particular, you'll see in the next chart, has really hit states hard. So, these are state proficiency standards for just Minnesota. And you'll take a look at from twenty thirteen all the way to twenty twenty-four and where we have gone since then. So, the blue line is eighth-grade math. So, eighth-grade math is one of the measurements that Minnesota uses, and third-grade reading is the other one. Eighth-grade math, you'll see a huge decline. There's a little bit of an incline happening, um, not a lot, but a little bit. And then, third-grade reading, you'll see has been in a steady decline. And you'll see that largest decline happening over those COVID years again. So, it's not an anomaly to just Monticello. It's happening across the country. It's happening across the state. I wanted to show you also, uh, you asked me a little bit about the data for cohorts then. So, if we follow a group of students across in our charts and looking at MCA data, I wish I had a little pointer here, it'd be a little bit easier. But, um, if you take a look, we'll kind of start maybe right in the middle at third grade if you go across the light blue in two thousand and seventeen. In two thousand and seventeen, our third graders, and what I'm looking at here is kind of the opposite of what we've been talking about. This is the percentage of students who did not meet standards at all. They were in the do-not-meet. So, on the MCAs, you can exceed or meet, and those who are grouped together be, to be called proficient. And then, you can partially meet or do not meet, and they're grouped together to say they're not proficient. But I'm looking specifically only at the students who don't even partially meet. They just don't meet at all. So, in two thousand and seventeen on the MCA, in third grade, it was nineteen point nine percent. And then, it went, it got a little bit better to ten point one, a little bit better. The six point seven of our students did not meet in grade five. And then, what typically happens when you see a cross, when they jump to middle school, it goes up. It, it starts to go up again, and we have more students who do not meet. Several reasons probably behind that. The tests get more difficult once you get to middle school. Middle schoolers are different than they are in the elementary. They take things less seriously, and then we've got some of our opt-out concerns that we've had in the past. But when you follow the color across and you follow those cohorts across, you see some typical, uh, trends. And what I see typically is we get to about fifth grade, and then when we hit middle school, we start to struggle a little bit more. So, we are addressing many of those struggles, which you heard, uh, when the middle school talked about what they're doing, reading across the curriculum. Uh, they're really focused heavily on reading, the science of reading this year. I was at a meeting this morning with the middle school, and their heavy focus is following the science of reading across all content areas and really working on reading, writing, speaking, and listening. And, uh, very intentional across all, all content areas. So, I expect to see huge differences across there too. One of the things we can be quite proud of is I gathered evidence locally. Then, I was asked about local, how do we stand? And so, I gathered grade-three, grade-five, and grade-eight MCAs. And where do we stand? And I looked at twelve different districts, and then I looked at the state of Minnesota, which is the bolded black. And you'll notice in third grade, Monticello, we're in the upper, upper part. Even though we're at forty-seven point four, we are above state average, and there are some schools ahead of us, but we are doing better than many, many of the other schools, even though we want to be doing much better, right? Grade five, we are at the top. Our fifth graders and our fifth-grade teachers and students alike work very, very, very hard, and we're right at the top, so I'm, I'm pretty proud of that. And then, eighth grade, we're right near the top as well. So, it might look like our data is really low. We might be really concerned about it, but comparatively to districts around us, we're really doing quite well.
People might ask, you know, why those districts? And we just really picked districts that touched our borders. So, we just went out, and then we picked a few like-sized districts from, uh, different areas of the state in order to, um, you know, compile some trends that, uh, you could, um, relate to.
Yeah, we were trying to get some apples-to-apples data, and then we were trying to get all the districts that touch our borders, yeah. This, um, last chart that I have for you, again, follows those cohorts across. This time, looking at our FastBridge data. It's between MCA and FastBridge. The MCA data is measuring how close we are to meeting state standards at each grade level. How, how are we meeting those benchmarks? FastBridge data is measuring risk of not reading at grade level. So, what you're seeing here is the number of students who are reading at or above grade level, at or above benchmarks, following, again, those cohorts across. FastBridge in the middle school across the board is more new. I think we're in our third year of FastBridge across all of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. Second or third year. This is our third year. So, you won't see as much data on the left-hand corner of that. But again, you can follow those cohorts across, and you can see growth is really pretty typical. I was excited last time I was here. We talked about if you look in grade kindergarten, the kind of lime green, and you see the growth of those kindergartners coming all the way across. Uh, it's going up and up and up and up. And then, we saw, I think it was sixty-one percent or sixty-four percent of our kindergartners in the fall. So, things are looking up. And then, I'm just going to close with, remember our goals? We had several district-wide goals, but our literacy goal was, and you've heard everyone mention it, that by twenty-twenty-six, we would like all of our students, we want seventy percent of our students, I should say, at proficiency either on our MCA exams or on our FastBridge assessments and screenings that we do. Our goal is seventy percent, and then our goal will be eighty percent by probably twenty-twenty-eight or nine. So, we'll keep moving from there. And you heard many of our principals talk about their theory of action, or they talked about their observable impact plans, and they talked about if, if they do what they're, what they say they're going to do, then you're going to see teachers do this, and you're going to see students do that. And that's what this is right here, so I'm not really going to read through it, but I wanted you to know what we've done as a district. And then, the trickle-down effect is what you've heard everyone else talk about. So, what we've done as a district is we've allocated funding for new reading curriculum. We have allocated funding to increase support staff across the district. We have, um, provided professional development for all of our K-through-five general education teachers of reading and special education teachers, K-through-twelve, and EL teachers as well. So, we're really working on that professional development and, uh, with administrators alike. And then, embedding, uh, that MTSS support across the district. And if we've done that, then we have allowed our principals and our teachers and our students to be able to do what they can do across the district. So, I think it's looking very positive, and I have to say that I, I don't think I've seen a year where I've seen a group of people work as hard as they have, uh, as this year. It's in, it's a very heavy lift, as you heard Shelley say, for everyone, uh, but especially our teachers. So, I want to congratulate them on all the hard, hard work they've done.
And why we're very proud of all the things that we are building. Most of them are, um, along the science of, um, of education. Please, once again, I reiterate that, um, as superintendent, I will make sure that our, um, administration equally emphasize the art and the, of building relationships with students because it's equally, if not the more, a little bit more important because it has to start with the relationship so that kids are ready to, um, go as far as they can with, um, all the structures that we've created. So, um, the principals will hear me say it and remind them over and over again. We are proud of all these things we're building because it was our biggest area of growth that our district needed. We didn't have some of these things. That's why you'll see at every building, evidence of new classes, new schedules, um, uh, Science of Reading, new trainings, um, building professional development plans, um, on their. of Reading, new trainings, building professional development plans on the horizon for EL and special ed, which we didn't have. And so we are putting all these science pieces into place, because we have found out that that was our biggest area of needs. But once again, you can never replace the art of building a relationship with a child, because that is what they will remember the rest of their life. Learning is what they'll be able to apply, but it's the relationship that'll help them open up their hearts and their brains to be able to learn and be able to take that stuff, that teaching in. So relationships are equally important. But we know as a board, you have to zone in and zero in to the community's interests in how are we doing? And how we are doing is very much assimilated in a report card fashion. And that's why we bring forth data, not to use data to scare people, but to use data to drive what we do, so that it's not just a hunch. It's, we know that we are using the very facts that should show us the story that we need to go present and do for every child, so.
Yeah.
Once again, I have to keep saying that, because it's hard. As a board, I don't want you to walk away and say, you know, that you answer only to the data points, because children aren't data points. They might represent a data point, but if we start thinking of them only as that...
Yeah. One of the things I want to thank all the principals and administrators, two and a half years ago, the board sat down and we developed a new strategic plan, goals and objectives for the superintendent. And that was a long, tedious process. And oftentimes, when you're sitting in these kind of seats, you say, does it really matter? You know, this kind of stuff, is it just a verbal exercise that we're going through to come up with some dazzling mission statement that we're going to paste on the wall? And while it's tedious data, and there's a lot of charts and graphs, I think this is a really easy area to understand, that the goals that we set as a board for oversight and direction and vision for the district were academics, academics, academics. And now we're starting to see that coming to fruition. And I know how hard it's been with all of the changes so rapidly. So I want to thank the administrators for driving that in your buildings and making that a priority. And I just think it's really cool when you see it all come together like that. Anybody else from the board? Thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Well, we're getting down to the end of our agenda, and we have Mr. Rob Daniker, Director of Human Resources, going to discuss first reading of some policies for us. We have no policies for approval tonight. This is first read only.
All right, Chair Zebarth, members of the board. We have, we had a policy meeting earlier today, and we reviewed 10 policies. We brought six of them forward for a first read this evening. And we have a, just going to wait for AV to get that up. All right, so the first one is, so following our annual review cycle, the first one is a product of that, this is policy number 215. And in fact, it has to do with student representatives on the school board. In this case, there has been, this is a locally drafted policy. There is no MSBA counterpart, and...
We're cutting edge.
And the purpose of this policy is to foster an environment whereby students may freely express their views and listen to and evaluate the opinions of others. A student representative to the school board is authorized in order to facilitate a more effective communication and help promote sound education. The policy committee did review this and proposed some minor language changes to the policy generally around. The policy as currently written limits the establishment of student representatives to two. Obviously, we have three, so we've already violated our own policy. And so we're going to attempt to amend that to address the situation, among other things, so.
Except the number altogether. Might have 15 or 20.
And so the other thing is this renumbers the policy. Currently, it's number 214 in our policy catalog. We would renumber it to 215, because 214 is MSBA model policy regarding school board out-of-state travel. And so we're just trying to align that there as well. Any questions at all on 215? Again, initial read, so the half the board members haven't had a chance to review these. So the next one is 418. This is a revision that's brought forward because of legislative update. This is our drug-free workplace, drug-free school policy. The purpose of this policy is to maintain a safe and helpful environment for employees and students by prohibiting the use of alcohol, toxic substances, medical cannabis, non-intoxicating cannabinoids, edible cannabinoid products, and controlled substances without a physician's prescription. Specifically, the legislative update had to do with exceptions to this policy. And Article 4, Section D is an addition, and it basically says that the school district may not refuse to enroll or otherwise penalize a patient or person enrolled in the sort of patient registry program. And so that was the sum effect of the legislative change on this one. Any questions regarding 418? Okay, moving forward. 419, again, revision brought forward because of legislative action. This is our tobacco-free environment, possession and use of tobacco, tobacco-related devices, and electronic delivery devices, vaping awareness and prevention instruction policy. The title of the policy is actually longer than the purpose statement. The purpose statement is, the purpose of this policy is to maintain a learning and working environment that is tobacco-free. The legislative action on this one is found in Article 4, Section C. And basically, the legislative change was that this guarantees that American Indian students or staff members may use tobacco, sage, sweetgrass, and cedar to conduct individual or group smudging in a public school. That was some of the legislative change on that. As a policy committee, we are proposing some minor changes to the policy as well, specifically forbidding any use of tobacco in district-owned vehicles regardless of the number of occupants. Any questions on 419? Okay, continuing, moving forward, we have policy number 502. This is part of our, we're back to our review cycle policies. This policy is, the title is Search of Student Lockers, Desks, Personal Possessions, and Students' Person. And in fact, there has been no legislative update nor MSBA update to this model policy since we, as a district, last reviewed this, excuse me, revised this in 2016. The purpose of this policy is to provide a safe and healthful educational environment by enforcing the school district's policy against contraband. Any questions on 502 at all? Okay, hearing none, moving forward. Next policy, again, product of our review cycle, but also has been subject to legislative updates since it was last reviewed. This is policy 503 on student attendance. Specifically, in 2024, the legislature revised statute regarding excused absences. And so significant material under the excused absences section of this policy was changed by statute, and so the policy has been recommended for change in accordance with that. As well, locally, we are proposing to make some changes to the MSBA model policy. They have some pieces where we can kind of fill in specific numbers, for instances, for accumulated unexcused absences, et cetera. And we are proposing simply to point the reader to the school handbook that is applicable in the situation. Any questions on policy 503? Oh, I forgot to mention the purpose. Sorry about that. The school board believes that regular school attendance is directly related to success in academic work, benefits students socially, provides opportunities for important communications between teachers and students, and establishes regular habits of dependability important to the future of the student. The purpose of this policy is to encourage regular school attendance, intended to be positive and not punitive. And of course, of our local goals is to have better than 90% attendance as well, so. Any questions on 503? Okay. And then finally, 505 for first read. This is the distribution of non-school-sponsored materials on school premises by students and employees. The purpose of this policy is to protect the exercise of students and employees' free speech rights, taking into consideration the educational objectives and responsibilities of the school district, so finding the true balance in those two objectives. This is for review only, meaning that there has been no legislative change nor MSBA model policy change since the district last reviewed this in 2019. Any questions on 505 at all? Okay, and so again...
Thank you, Mr. Daniker.
Yeah, so these are first read, no action tonight, Chair Zebarth.
So before we adjourn for the evening, tomorrow is a non-student day, correct? And it is a professional development day for staff, and that's because it is Election Day tomorrow. And it's too complicated with a lot of security measures to have students in the building and the public in the building and that sort of thing. So if you're eligible to vote, please vote. The next Monticello School Board meeting will be Friday morning at 6:00 a.m. And I know you'll all be here smiling. It will be recorded and livestreamed. The purpose of that 6:00 a.m. meeting only happens once every couple of years, once every four years, or two years. It's to canvas the school board elections and report the results of that election. And that has to be done in a certain format according to the law. And so that will happen on Friday. And then the next meeting after that will be the 21st of November, Monday evening, 18th of November. I'm sorry, I'm not looking at the calendar, so. So that's that. If you're interested in following the school board election, you can go onto the Secretary of State's website, it will close tomorrow, or anytime Thursday, or you can come in Friday morning at 6:00 a.m. for the school board meeting to canvas the election. Is there any further discussion from anyone on the board? Questions?
Just a shout out to Devany for learning all the canvassing protocol.
Yep, she is our election coordinator and our parliamentarian, and we couldn't do it without her. So thank you, Devany. At finding no further business to conduct, we are adjourned at 6:33. We will reconvene at 6:40 for the work session. Thank you.